I would like to call the order, the Planning and Zoning Historic Commission meeting of Monday, July twenty first, uh, twenty fourth, uh, two thousand and twenty-three. I have six P M. Uh, could I have the call?
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Here.
Chair Brunner.
Here.
Reyes Brahar.
Here.
Myers is absent. Feck.
Here.
Kruger.
Here.
And Stannick.
Yes. Fantastic. So forum has been met, so we can move on to our next item on our agenda, which is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who has anything they'd like to say in regards to our business for the evening?
I just wanted to thank you guys all for coming out. I appreciate the time. I know you guys called a special meeting and I really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Looking forward to being part of the meeting.
Fantastic. So, okay, uh, with that, um, I guess I would entertain a motion. Should we do a motion to, to?
Um, I don't think you need it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
But when in doubt, we can't make a move.
No, so I think we will, we will, uh, avoid doing that today. Um, and I will say that just as an overview for people watching and, uh, here in attendance, this is the initial meeting on this property. There are still some outstanding questions that we know we won't have resolved tonight. Want to take literally with the fire department. Um, so we'll be going through all the items, sharing what our plans are, providing feedback, but we don't, we will not have, uh, a binding certificate of appropriateness tonight. So that being said, um, I'd like to move on to the, the certificate of appropriateness for proposed facade changes at three oh nine Meyer Street. And the way I'd like the, um, conversation to go, uh, I think we'll have the applicant, uh, provide an overview and then we'll go through as they're listed on the, uh, agenda here, the five items that, uh, are listed and we'll talk about each one individually. Could you state your name?
Yeah, my name's Colin Hagerty. Uh, thanks guys for inviting me and hosting the meeting. Um, I guess the goal of this project is just to try to get, you guys all understand the cost with everything and, and going back and forth and trying to get, um, uh, a final product. And one of the issues that I have is obviously it's in a historic district, so I'm reaching out for you guys for advice, having your guys' thoughts on where we can go. I provided a brief glimpse of what I would love to do. I know that there's probably going to be pushback on, or, or there's going to be comments that might not, um, uh, I guess fall in the suit of where you guys want to go with it. And that's why I'm here. I'm, you know, as well as in the other Dundee and, and, and Pinger Grove and hopefully a lot of other communities, I want to work with the community. So I'm trying to get a step forward and then move the process along as, as quick as possible. I'm hoping, um, that I can get some great feedback and some runway with you guys. And I'm hoping, uh, the first of next month, that the project is rocking and rolling and, uh, that I'm open as quick as possible for the community. So, um, that's kind of where I'm at right now. Uh, I put together, you know, there's a lot of different drawings on, that I've looked at. Um, I'm kind of looking kind of for your direction and I can change pretty much anything. Um, but also, um, just like in the other Dundee, I know that if I don't make a stamp and, and in, make a big impact, it's going to be the same issue that occurred over, um, at Maple and Ash, and that's why it's been so successful. Uh, I spent a lot of money in on the project. I've redone, um, everything from, you know, start to finish. And, you know, perfect example was last two Tuesdays ago, I closed down and in forty-eight hours, I ripped out the entire, uh, sewage and, in the bathroom and all the plumbing and rebuilt it and closed down for forty-eight hours. I, I sleeping there to get the project done as quick as possible, but it was something that had to be done at a cost that I wouldn't want to talk about, but that's kind of where I'm at. Um, so I'm excited about this project. Uh, I know the building's great. Um, it really came to life, um, when I was sitting out on the patio. Uh, we talked about it and I spoke with Tom multiple times about it, but I was sitting out at Aliano's and I'm looking across the street and it's a thirsty Thursday and it's packed downtown. And, you know, D C Cobb is doing great, Bandito Barney's, there's people walking, there's kids out there, everyone's dancing, having a great time. And I look across the street and I see this beautiful patio at, um, you know, the Anvil Club and I'm like, no one's there. So, um, I'm looking to open that up. Uh, that's why you guys see the garage door. They have a beautiful bar outside. Um, you know, obviously that's only a partial amount of the year. Um, but like I said, depending on, you know, how well the restaurant does, I wouldn't be imposed to closing it and making it a Four Seasons room, just like I did at, uh, Pinger Grove. So I have, uh, another Maple and Ash that's completely enclosed. It's a Four Seasons room, but it has a beautiful view in the winter. Cause yes, it is, you can see completely outside. So, and, and I'm in a good area there where they look into farmland and see snow and enjoy it, but it'd be the same thing here. So, um, just depending on how the restaurant does, I'm always willing to invest and do more into the, the community. But kind of looking for some feedback on, you know, this was a couple of different views and a couple of different thoughts on it. Um, it makes the building pop a little bit more, um, which I think it needs. I think sometimes it feels like it's not inviting, um, and I want to make it inviting. Um, I also proposed, um, changing, uh, the front step to make it a little bit more, uh, um, wheelchair accessible. And, um, on top of that, it's a little bit of a crooked step down. So especially someone with a cane or, or things like that. So I just want to make the, uh, building welcoming, you know, get families and friends in there. Um, not looking to stay open late, um, just trying to get, you know, businesses in there and do, you know, family parties and business parties and close down and get home and take care of our families and move forward. So, um, I hope you guys like, um, what's proposed. I got a lot of, I, or I got some feedback in the recent, uh, coming days. Erica sent out an email again today with some more stuff. Like I said, I can change anything and I can do everything. Um, there's a lot of money that's going to be invested in it. So I'm hoping, um, that you can understand some of the proposals that I put together. Any questions? I'd love to answer and I'll take feedback. I might get on my phone and put notes in.
So you have, you, uh, operate the Maple and Ash, uh, the one in Pinger Grove and the one here in West Dundee?
Yep, I own both of them.
Oh.
So, knock on one, it's been great. I own a ton of different restaurants within the community. Um, I had Meat and Potatoes, uh, three of those.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I luckily, I, I sold them at the right time and got out, but I love the restaurant. Kids are involved, my wife's involved. I got a great staff, so it's, I've had people that I've been with me for, you know, my director of operations, the C's oversees both the locations. He was my original boss when I, uh, first became a general manager, uh, twelve years ago. And now he works for me, but great guy and I'm all about family. Not my family as much, but they deal with it. They love it.
So before we get into the items, if anybody else has any general questions that you'd like to ask.
So for the outdoor area, do you intend to have like loud music, dancing music, or is it like soft or?
No, I, I, nothing, uh, I wouldn't say anything crazy. No, I don't, I don't think, you know, maybe a, a small like acoustic band, but no, it's not going to be live music and, and blow the doors off. And like I said, I'm not.
No Bad Bunny?
I'm not looking to stay open late.
Okay.
Um, there's, nothing good happens after twelve o'clock.
Okay, great. Well, then let's move on to the, um, the first item. Yeah, you can sit down and get back up if you want to, but I will probably keep asking you questions. So, um, the very first one in the list is the, uh, the overhead garage door. And I'll say that this is, uh, you know, we got right before the meeting, a letter from the fire department saying that, that appears that this will impact the number of egresses on the building. You know, since that is an existing exit door right now that you're replacing the overhead door with. So there will have to be some change in regards to that, if we could move forward with it. Just wanted to, to get that in there.
What did the fire, my fireman said what?
So, so there needs to be a certain number of exits in the building.
Right.
And this, where this, uh, garage door is going, there's presently an exit door.
Okay.
But a garage door isn't an exit door. You can't, you know, just.
Right, right.
So if they put a garage, if they remove that exit door, put this one in, another exit door has to be added.
Oh, I see. Okay.
That's, that's their concern at least. They'll have to see, you know, more official drawings to, you know.
I'll have my architect design all that and if I have to add another, um, exit door, I will add one.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sure you probably get a chance to read it. It's pretty straightforward in the, in the message that we got. So, um, so does anyone have any questions about the garage door?
It is, it's obviously thermally insulated, right?
Yes, it's a, it's a clear, um, so it's a, it's a black trim and a clear glass door.
Okay.
Yeah, um, uh, Commissioner Scarpelli here just said, is it similar to the one that's on black and gray? Is that like the visual?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure there's just clear, it's not.
It is clear, yeah.
Hundred percent clear.
Yeah.
So it'd just be like a window. Now, could there be a tint added depending on the sun? I haven't looked into that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think, you know, and that's like to my, I have a bunch of questions along, along this type of stuff as well because right where that's going to go on the other side is going to be the bar, right? That's the really nice, you know, outdoor bar at the Anvil. And that's what you expect to have be there, right? So walking by when you're closed during the winter or whatnot, people would see in and see the bar setup. That's it.
Correct.
Yeah, and make it easy to see in. Okay. Yeah, in general, you know, I, my, my feeling is with a garage door like that, if you look at this building, you know, originally it had giant doors that were open to the public, you know, having big open spaces into these buildings is not, you know, it's kind of a cool thing. I think it's neat to look in there and it's fitting with, with the general look in my opinion. So I, I don't really, uh, you know, I don't really have any concern from the opening. I mean, is there anything that you would want in terms of a different material on the outside?
I was just thinking a different color, but we, there is no color palette, you know, to like look at, but, uh, but maybe something that, because if you, I know there's a lot of black onings around the area, but also considering how this area was, it's, we're trying to keep it historic. And I understand the trend right now, I'm an architect, so that's why I'm talking about certain things.
No worries.
Um, that's why I know that the trend right now is black, but then it changes every fifteen, twenty years. Um, so I would, I would propose something a little bit more neutral. I'm not sure how the wood lintel overhead works for this design because there's no other wood lintels introduced in the facade other than the trellis, but those are just minor details. Um, I am a little bit, uh, I'm, are these two double doors right underneath the signage? Are those double doors or those are the existing doors?
They're, they're photo doors now.
I would remember those. Okay.
Yeah.
So they're big doors.
Yeah, there's bathrooms behind them.
Those are not going to be touched, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We're going to keep that.
But you can see with the photos, so, so the, the two photos I brought for you, yeah, that one, that's the eighteen, I mean, the nineteen fifty-four photo. And they would have been functional at that point. And then that's the, like nineteen oh one with them open.
With them open without the doors.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I understand the issue about, um, your concern about the steps for the main entry door, but that's kind of one of the beautiful features of maintaining something historic. And I do know that, um, for, in order to comply for ADA, you could have an, you could provide assistance to bring someone into that level, or there's a secondary side door for that, which it doesn't look like you really have an opportunity to introduce one in the front. It would have to be something in the back.
Yeah, Anvil, Anvil presently does on the building, all the way on the right.
On the right side?
From the side, that's where they, they carry people.
So that's, that's one of the, I, I'm recently new to East Dundee and that was some of the features going to this restaurant. Um, even though I know that the step is a little bit higher than what it's supposed to be, just the uniqueness and the beauty of the originalness of it, it's, it's just gorgeous. It just, you don't see that, we're, as architects and developers, we're used to knocking everything down and rebuilding. So this would be, you know, if we could keep a little bit of history, you know, of what this building was, you know, I, that would be one of them, obviously the double doors. I do like the open idea of the, um, outdoor patio portion. I agree, it's a little too close and I think opening it up does help. And in the future, if you do have a covered area, that could be something that would have to be looked at. But, you know, there's many options for that. Um, and then, I, I don't know how everybody feels. Can we talk about material, about like the stone or are we there or not? Not yet?
Yeah, I mean, jumped a bit ahead.
Okay, okay, I did jump a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
I could keep talking.
You're on a roll.
I'm used to doing this.
So.
I'll stop right there.
Yeah, so I guess with the garage door, there isn't any, any other feedback anybody wants to provide with the, the garage door?
Nope.
Where in general, as long as it meets the fire code?
Yes.
And the other, you know, building.
Yes.
You know, codes, I think the, her comment on being conscious about the color, you know, and maybe not just defaulting to black might be a good thing to think about. Um, and we could see on your, your next proposal, like what you, you know, and say why, why you like the black or whatever else is around it. So that'd be great.
Could I say something about that? Uh, the, the, the proposed ramp is not long enough to be ADA compliant. It, you're allowed, uh, one inch of rise for every foot.
So.
And so you, you have roughly nineteen and a half inches from the, from the sidewalk to your threshold. Uh, that front porch that you would put on it would slope down about an inch and a half or so. So you, you'd need at least between eighteen and eighteen and a half, almost nineteen foot of run on that ramp. And that may impact the location of that, that, that overhead door. So that's something that your architect can look at also, just so you're aware.
Mm-hmm.
Cause the one on there is only sixteen feet.
So there's, yeah, so Commissioner Scarpelli, that's a great point. Thank you for bringing, bringing it up. Cause yeah, that clearly, it looks like you're almost as close as you can be to the corner with overhead door. And then Commissioner Scarpelli brought up like having access from inside, uh, but that's, you know, if you went through the, the door from the veranda, but there are pretty steep steps, I know, going from the veranda into the restaurant. You know, this, this door, the front door puts you on the ground level, whereas the veranda is down four steps maybe. Um, so, and there's no, I mean, there's no real ramp. Um, which I guess is kind of a concern in that there isn't a restroom accessible from the veranda without going into the building up that way.
No.
Yeah, I mean, with, with the code, if, if a building isn't ADA compliant and, and they don't have to make it ADA compliant, it's, it, it can be the way it is. I mean, you, you want ADA accessibility and if they're going to do a ramp, it has to be ADA compliant.
Okay.
But, and, and so, so when you start touching things, then you got to bring them up to code. When things are left alone, then that's, that's the history of the building and you're, and you're, you're locked in at that, at time frame.
Okay.
Unless, unless you change like the use of it completely, where this is a restaurant going to a restaurant, there's no use change.
So this is a good transition, I think. We'll just now start blending into the exterior ramp conversation.
Chris, do you know on the, on the garage door, I've seen where within a garage door, there's an actual, when the door's closed, you can use like three of the panes and have a man door inside of the thing. Do you know if that complies with the?
Yeah, the, the, the fire marshal, uh, in his letter can't conclude right now whether it's going to be required or not. He, we, we really want to meet with you onsite and walk through it to, and he can tell and I can tell whether there's other exits that'll qualify for, for that, that area. And if there are, then he's not going to have an issue with the overhead door. So.
I haven't looked in detail on all the exits or how many exits or how it lines up. Uh, I don't, like I said, it, it works if I have to make it on the door to meet that expectation.
Yeah.
I hope to do it.
I think the biggest challenge probably would be with that specific place when the, you know, the veranda has a metal door to isolate the bar from the veranda. If that was down, you would have no way out anywhere. Like if you had that open in the winter and that was down.
Back door.
You'd have to run through like past the pizza oven?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So yeah, that would work, I guess, maybe. But yeah, I mean, he, he knows the, he knows the.
Yeah, but we, once we get in there and take a look at it, we can give you a really good idea of what would be required.
I think the first step would be for the architect to draw an exit plan. And then provide that with you guys and.
Right, okay.
Us to all sit down and go through it.
Sounds good.
I can all, can pretend that I'm going to write it all up, but it's got to be on paper, right?
Right.
Yeah, and we don't want to entertain the ramp being on the other side of the building, I assume, or the other side of the door.
Correct.
Cause that would really change the look of the front of the building.
So I, I'll lead into that, cause that was one of the things that I, I know what the ramp level is and I know that's where it can be. I can change the ramp level, but it can never, where the existing exit door is to get to nineteen feet or get to eight, I would have to remove that door. So the only other way would be to go the opposite way. I'm just.
Yeah.
Looking at it. I'm a, uh, I'm fortunate enough, I'm in a demographic of breakfast, lunch. And when breakfast, lunch, I have a ton of, a, a good chunk of my customers are older clientele. And the biggest frustration that I have is accessibility. So one of the things that I always try to do is.
Yeah.
Provide for them and kids. Cause I don't go out to restaurants, my kids choose the restaurants. I'm lucky they choose good restaurants, you know, same with my parents. So that's kind of where I'm trying to go at it. I would, I can go the other way, but I think it's going to destroy the.
Yeah.
The facade of the building. I'm just trying to get something that's more accessible so that it's not a, I was there the other night and I saw a couple almost tread.
Yeah.
They're, they're, they're very high steps.
Yes.
And especially with the cane.
Right, yes, sir.
And the winter, I couldn't, I've never seen it in winter.
Yeah, it's a lot of salt they put out there.
Yeah.
And with two trays.
Yeah.
It's a good night.
So what's the issue with the, the ramp, if the ramp went to the north instead of the south?
Just the impact on the look of the building.
Building.
The doors and everything, the base, you know, the old doors. It would pretty much end right in the middle, like the end of the far door.
Correct. That was the first way I went.
Yeah.
Is it to be accessible?
Yeah, and, and so what, what you're saying is that we can't, you can't put in a ramp at all unless it's ADA compliant.
Correct.
Isn't there, uh, I, I could be speaking, we've got it out of line, but isn't there a small terminology in there that's based off of accessibility or assistance that that will deteriorate, potentially degrade?
No, not to my, not to my knowledge, no. It either has to comply or it can't be put in.
And I'll look deeper into it and provide more feedback.
So also, this will be on the sidewalk, right, existing?
On a public walk, correct.
On the public walk. And, and how much of the width was it going to take of the, I mean, we don't have it top down.
The, the, the numbers that are on here are, aren't quite accurate. Uh, there's actually a little more space than what they have. I went out there and measured it. So they would have from the edge of the ramp to the inside part of the curve, not to the outside part of the curve, they'd have about, um, let's see, five, about four and a half feet.
Okay.
Of walkway. And then once you get to the, the other area where the brick pavers are, it, it opens up wide.
And then your, um, the, 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 the run that we're talking about, that we're missing it by like a really little amount, right?
The length of it?
Yeah.
About two and a half feet.
Okay, would it, is it possible to have like a ninety degree by coming straight in?
Then, then you need a whole landing that's thirty-six by sixty and it gets.
Break that whole, right?
And it just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trying to be creative. So, okay.
Is this, I have a quick question. Is this the, what he's using for the outside?
Yeah, we'll talk about that when we get to the exterior.
I was just curious.
Yes, yes, it is. Um, that's, you know, where it looks like stone, that's the material. We don't have a picture for the, the white part.
Okay.
But I think the staff does, the stucco.
I didn't see any.
Oh, but we know the material?
It says, it says stucco on there.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, so with the ramp, um, I think you, I, I think we got all the information out. We can, I, I would, I don't think on the commission, we're not against a ramp, right? Um, like this, pretty, you know, um, unless there would be a way to, I mean, there are other historic buildings, you know, I would say, just to, to add. I know there's this, uh, it's an N H R P or N R H P house in Elgin, when the Christian Geister House, beautiful house as you're going into downtown Elgin. They have their, you know, ADA ramp. It's out the back door, right, for accessibility. Brings you into the restaurant, but it didn't then impact the front of their, their, um, you know, actual building, which I think I would in general prefer, uh, not impacting the front. Um, so if there is another place where ramp could go, that would be great.
Would you guys be against, um, say no ramp was there and there was ramp added on the side? Would you be against the steps?
Against?
Adding steps to the front facade to make it more accessible even to some.
Oh.
Changing the steps.
Changing the steps or, um, gosh.
Once you change the steps, that might be pulling, that may be triggering then.
But he's saying if he can get an accessible, he's location somewhere else.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Correct, Colin?
Correct.
Yeah, so the, so the step, the minimum, when you, when you exit a, a facility, the minimum platform you need is three feet. What he's proposing here is six feet and then the steps would start.
So.
And there's still enough room to get around the steps as they're proposed on the sidewalk.
So let me ask you this, Chris, if he does a ramp in the bath or somewhere else, he could then do the ramp he wants to do out front, it wouldn't meet the ADA code with the one in the back.
I honestly, I don't know if that's true because you end up with a liability issue because people don't know that it's not ADA compliant and if somebody falls and they.
Isn't it still a liability issue now?
Pardon me?
Isn't it still a liability issue now?
No, it's grandfathered.
What's a liability?
Right now?
Is that, it's, I'm trying to enter the way it is.
Yeah, but it's, yes, but it's a different form of liability where you're not falling under the, um, the act of the, um, the ADA compliance act.
Correct.
Which is federal and state code, whereas the other one is just.
Still on.
A bad, a bad situation.
So, so Christie, the standards are the Illinois standards, cause the federal government doesn't have any standards. They just have the act.
They have the act.
Uh, but the, but the, the standards are usually set by the state.
Yes.
State or, or the international building code possibly?
The state, the state.
The state.
Um, yeah, yeah, or, you don't know if the issue varies, do you?
They don't.
Okay.
Yeah, they're also, on the steps right now, there aren't any railings, right?
No.
So.
Right.
No.
I would try to add.
It's grandfathered.
Yeah, so.
But there's, there's two steps and you're going up nineteen and, nineteen and a half inches. They're high, really high steps.
Yes. So would there be a way to work with the existing steps in it? I guess if you added additional one, they'd be really shallow steps.
Yeah, they're, they're proposing six, six inch.
Oh, okay.
There's six inch rise on each of the steps, three steps instead of two, and they'd be six inches and then the platform slopes an inch and a half. That's where you get to your nineteen and a half.
So were you then saying if you added additional steps, would you use the existing steps and add in splits?
Like, it would have to be redone?
But once, once he does that, he has to do that landing and you don't have the space here for the landing. So you would have to move your door into, I don't know what the.
Well, he, he, he's proposing a six foot landing here.
I don't see a floor plan.
Oh, okay, yeah, you, I don't know if you got the, uh.
No, it's not.
No.
It's on the packet?
No.
Oh, the landing, oh.
Is that a reasonable proposal? We have trustees here. Proposal to raise the sidewalk.
If you, if you raise the sidewalk over a long distance, high enough to where the ramp starts, there, there might be enough room?
Okay, die open a can of worms.
I don't see where, okay. This is not, this is not correct. This is here, uh-huh, but then this must have at least, uh, eighteen inches. And then this one is, I see this one.
It's almost like you're talking to an expert over there, right?
Yeah.
And it's, yeah.
So, um, the conversation, Lily and then.
This is not.
Just want to make sure we're getting what you're discussing on, on record.
Yeah, so, so just what, we're looking at the ramp and the steps that were introduced as proposed. And we're just looking at, you know, how the building is and how it relates to landing and the steps. So there's one, two, three, three risers and it's concrete.
Are they present limestone? What, what are they, they're stone?
It just, currently, it's like, um, I think it's like a stone.
Yeah.
Like a limestone.
Yeah.
Currently it is, yeah.
Yeah. If it, if it has that same type of texture and then, I don't know, what's the, it's, you said, um, once you put the ramp, you have about four foot six per code, isn't it five feet that you need to have?
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about for the width of the sidewalk.
Width of the sidewalk.
Isn't the width of the sidewalk five feet? I don't know that we have a specific code on the width of the sidewalk. I'd have to look at our.
Usually sidewalks are.
Usually they are, but I'm not sure if the Village of East Dundee has a specific code.
I don't know what Dundee follows, but if it's IEC, then or ANSI, it's usually five feet. But the ramp could be more narrow.
Well, the ramp's gotta be thirty-six inches.
Oh, that's what that's wrong.
What's the guidance from the PZHC for the applicant?
And this is just in in regards to the ramp. I think well, we we know right now, there's nothing about this current, the the current setup won't work. And so we have to be, you know, creative with a way to to fix it. I think we recognize the need for improved accessibility, especially, do you plan on using all of the the floor space right in the beginning of this building?
Yeah.
Okay, but it is a challenge having them come in this side right now, you know, so I recognize that there's, you know, we should do something for.
Or maybe just not on the front of the building.
Maybe not on the front of the building, since this doesn't work as is, I'd be interested in that, and then seeing what you, you know, it seemed like you were willing to relook at the the front landing, you know.
I'm really, look at, I just think, I don't know, I have handicap family members. I would be extremely frustrated if I pulled up into a handicap accessible building.
Yeah.
If I'm handy, fully handicap, how do I get into that building?
Yeah.
I have to call the restaurant to then tell them to go around the corner to try to get them into the restaurant. I have no problem with it.
Yeah.
I just, I I was hoping I could get creative in a way at the front of the building to help.
It would, I mean, and and I I I appreciate that. I think, you know, it is, it is like our whole town, right, there is no, none of the old buildings have, they're all steps up.
Right.
Except, I guess, all the way like, you know, Willow and Birch, now all the way on that end, they're not, but all the restaurants are steps.
Yeah, that's right.
And none of them have ramps in the front. You know, so it's you know, in terms of consistency, it's not, not in line.
No, it's not.
Does that, does that landing have to be eight feet?
Which landing are we talking from?
The landing in front of the door, right, because they're showing that it's eight, eight feet from the edge of the first step to the to the edge of the ramp. Eight feet, I mean, that.
That's six feet.
Six.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's six.
It's door swing plus turn.
Well, it's six feet from from east to west, but from north to south, where the ramp would be, that's showing, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
I'm seeing that as eight feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's eight feet.
They could move the ramp two more feet this way.
Yeah, so. I actually like the way that this ramp was in this dive, because you don't even notice it. That's what's awesome about it. You know, and and you probably have the only property in town where that can be done. So if 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 it can be worked with this, you know, I think that with this look and meet the code, I think we'd be okay with it. If not.
There would, there would be, have to be a guardrail on each side of that ramp, so there would be a guardrail that you would see.
Yeah.
And then that would tie into the handrail coming down the steps.
You could also take these stairs this way.
Yeah.
Because this is a window, not a door.
Right, and it's not even, it's opaque. All the windows are opaque anyway. You know, you only look out those windows.
Yeah.
So will you be taking any of the, or will you be taking like the opaqueness off of those windows? Like, I don't think you can see in any of these windows.
I'm okay.
Okay.
Yeah, you can't.
Yeah, yeah. Right, I mean, some might be fake windows, actually.
I have a question.
Oh, a good chunk of them are fake.
Yeah. For, going back to the ramp, I've done restaurants where the ramp is inside the building. We do take up space. I know there's a coat closet in there. Would that be some, is that something that you and your architect considered?
Yeah.
I would be willing to do anything, but I can only imagine the cost of that.
Yeah, maybe talk to your architect and see what they think, but that that would be, because the coat rooms here where the windows at,
Yep.
Put your door here, next to your garage door that you have, that's operable, and then.
Pretty sure it's concrete.
Yeah. Oh, concrete floor?
So I don't know how deep that is.
Okay.
And it's part of the foundation, I think, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, that would be expensive.
This is the, yes, the coat closet's right here.
Now, if the city would love it. Be my guest, they'll do anything.
I'm just trying to think of different ways to approach it. And that's something that we've done before.
Yeah, I went through as many options as I could to try to not destroy the front of the building.
What about, did you think about a lululemon?
An exterior wall.
No, that was a horrible trip.
Yeah. Probably cost a fortune.
This side out into the veranda is.
Yeah, about fifteen thousand.
It gets cold out here in the winter. It's, they keep it at like.
And then when it breaks down, usually the concrete doesn't break down. That's quick.
True.
But yeah, they could have like an outdoor door. So do you need more guidance from us then on what what we're, what we're saying? I think there's a lot of variables at play here.
Yeah, so it sounds like you're gonna explore the options if you want for an ADA accessible ramp?
I would love one, just because I know especially even the demographic around.
So it sounds like you'll be proposing something?
I would love to.
Okay, okay.
Now, if there's I guess extreme measures that had to be taken, yeah, I guess I could go around it, but I know what, you know.
Yeah.
We're only ten people.
Yeah.
But none of us are handicapped.
But as Chris said, the building is grandfathered in right now. Not needing a ramp.
I wish that the guests cared about that. I could put a big sign out there that said it's grandfathered in.
Alright, so we'll just wait for your.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll take a look at a couple other options.
Yeah.
And see what I can do. And then on top of that, I'll look at, you know, for example, I could remove the garage door. I don't know, you know, obviously, that wouldn't be preferred, but that would get to the accessibility access.
Yeah, I mean, because that's about as small of a garage door as you could do.
I don't know, smaller, but yeah, it starts getting weird.
What is this, ten feet wide?
Uh, I think it's nine.
They could make it smaller and then maybe a man door next to it, and then just do the, above the door, you could do a transform to mimic whatever lines the garage door has.
Yeah, but for example, if I went down to a door and then I removed and added another three feet, now I'm at a three foot garage door.
Without seeing, without seeing the floor plan, it's kind of hard.
No, 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 I got you.
Yeah.
No, but if, because with adding the additional three feet and then adding another, another door,
If you move this a foot.
Twenty-four inches, right?
Minimum.
Or ish, you're at, I'll lose another five feet. So the garage door will be tight, yeah. So it wouldn't, at that point, it wouldn't be worth it.
Yeah, just looking at the plan view, your sidewalk or your entrance here, just an idea, what would it hurt to say move your landing area to the north a foot or whatever you need that would give you more run in your ramp?
I'd have to loot, take out bathrooms.
Yep.
No, it would be outside.
Uh, it butts up right next to the bathroom.
Yep.
So the women's bathroom is right next door.
Oh, is that the little notch there?
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It is a conflict. Yep. Yeah, you definitely should be the walk through.
It's a real challenge with all those bathrooms right at the front.
Yes.
Would removing that garage door significantly impact operations of your business?
No, I think it'd just be a great view that is one of the prettiest outdoor bars in.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, obviously, Ollie Adams has a beautiful bar, but it's seven seats.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you wouldn't be, I mean, you could do a window.
It'll be the same.
But it wouldn't, yeah, you wouldn't get the pressure. I mean, the doors.
Bathroom, he says, is right here, right?
Yeah.
It sounds like it. So what would, what would be the difference if you just moved it over? We're not going on the inside here.
Uh, Chair, Chris Resnick asked what the difference would be if moving this landing over to the north impact on his building. And Colin, if you wanna take a look at this.
Yeah.
If moving this landing right here.
Just to the north.
Just to the north.
We're still outside.
Here, and it'll be outside of the line of the bathroom.
If it re, means requirements, I'll do anything.
See if your architect could explore that option as well for Chris's review.
Okay.
Because you're not giving anything to the interior. I think you can heat up two feet of this existing eight foot landing and not interfere with the door and the bed. So that gives you two more feet to do the ramp, and you might even be able to pick up a foot going this way.
Yeah, sure.
If you just, if you move these steps one foot further north, it would seem like, uh, that you'd get three feet, and if you had three more feet of ramp, he'd meet that. It's all outside. I think that would interfere with anything.
I appreciate that feedback. I'll look at it.
And then you could keep the garage door.
Yeah.
If we just slid this over a foot or two, we're still outside. It's not affecting the interior at all.
You're getting a free architect's review.
I love that.
I see that. Because that would give you the room.
Keep your garage door. Everything's good.
Yeah.
Now I owe Steve a beer. No, I owe Steve a beer.
No, you don't.
Let's get that on record.
Because these windows, you don't see through it. It's just walled off from whatever.
Yep.
Right, that's why they're good.
Yeah, I hope even more.
So those are two possibilities for your architect to explore and then submit back.
Okay.
Chris's review.
I would think that would be a, pretty much a zero cost, and then you'd keep everything that you want.
Okay. So then the next item on the list is moving to the facade treatment, and I would like a, I would appreciate a description of of your vision here and then the exact materials you'll be, you'll be using.
Okay, so the game plan here is just to obviously upgrade the facade and make the building pop more. There's a couple different thoughts behind it. I was trying to get more feedback in what the historic district would approve to allow me to provide a full drawing so that I didn't have to go back and forth and keep presenting to you guys, especially with the speed of it, and not having the building sit complacent. So what I'm proposing there is a, it's going to be a brick siding that's gonna look like natural brick. I proposed a brief color in one of the drawings. That wasn't the final project, product that was pulled off of Home Depot, but it's gonna be very similar to what that looks like. That'll wrap the building, and then there'll be stucco on the front. I haven't chosen a color because I wanted to see if that brick was approved and where you guys can go, but it would be a stucco finish in the front. I just don't know what that exact color will be, but I would get approval from you guys.
So the, when you say the brick, I I believe this is the gen stone product? Is that what you're considering?
Yeah, it's a fake.
Yeah, it's a polyurethane.
Cultured stone.
No, it's polyurethane.
Oh, it's polyurethane?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh.
Hung in sheets, yes. Yes.
It sounds okay.
Right, and I think that that's probably the same reaction I had when I found it was polyurethane, yes. And it, and it's, that's leading into, you know, the historic district and in general having natural materials. I know right now it is an engineered clappard, but it's very much trying to be what it used to be, you know, I think the animal club right now, it's one of the reasons I brought the photos, was it looks similar to how it always has looked for, you know, a hundred and fifty years. So, you know, I was, I'm I'm okay with that being a, you know, an engineered wood that's on there now. But like the this, you know, none of our other stone in town is this, you know, none of our other brick is this. So, I, I mean, to me, that's a material issue.
That was my initial reaction as well.
Yes. So like a cultured stone, I'd feel a lot better with if it was actually stone.
Like, in the maybe larger format, but I have a hard time in general just with the stone because when I was in the area, just driving around, you know, that that feel of, I hate to say the word American, but it just has that town, that small town feel, and I've done a lot of projects like this, I get it, but it just doesn't feel right in here.
There's, the only thing that I have is I agree with you. I'd love to do a a real stone and get that facade. It's just a drastic cost difference.
I understand.
Yeah.
Did you look into, because there's a lot of wood products or even engineered products that look like wood for siding, did you look into that, your architect?
I could love, I would love to put up wood again, but once again, like I said, the building's been there for seventy years.
Yep.
I laughed because I sat there the other day and I spoke to a a customer that's lived in Dundee for thirty-five years and they don't even know what the animal club is.
It was private against.
And 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 so with that being said, and and I use it back to maple and haches, that building was cursed. The minute that I walked in there, the first customer that walked in there, I waved to him and said, hi, how are you doing? And he goes, I don't even know why you're wasting your time. And I'm sitting there with my wife and I said, hey, sir, enjoy the bar, have a great seat, enjoy your food. I I look forward to talking to you. Walks out, the next day he comes back, the next day he comes back, the next day he comes back, and he comes up and apologizes to me. Because you actually did the job, you did the work into the building. That's what I'm kinda looking to do here.
Yeah.
I can change the facade of the building briefly, but am I gonna get the people to come in?
Coming back.
Yeah. And are they just gonna think that it's the same steakhouse that it was?
Right.
So.
Yeah.
That's where I have a a different touch to it that I'm trying to.
Yeah, and and I get the this, the, you know, where you're coming from, and I know some of these buildings that you've taken over, yeah, there's been a lot of turnover in those. I mean, this building though, it's been the same thing for seventy years.
Yep.
You know, it's, to say that it's a cursed building, I think's a hard stretch, see, because it's only, there's only been one thing tried there. And it's been successful, at least for the owner, to keep it at least until.
I would say that's not true.
He's been losing money, yes.
Yes.
But.
And if any one of us who's sitting at this table would look at it a lot differently than he looks at it.
Yeah, yeah, but you know.
And I only saw four years in the financials and I cringed.
Yeah, so I I understand that it cannot be what it was.
Yeah.
Right, but we really have no idea what it could be. You know, so you know, that you're you're the first one looking to change it in seventy years.
Yeah.
No, I agree, I understand.
And until three years ago, it didn't even have a sign saying what it was. You know, so how how come people didn't know what it was? They thought it was like one of the barns we have in town, because they didn't even advertise, right? There was no advertising in town. If you went there, people in town did not generally go there.
Yep.
So it was the way that it was. So I think if you said, what building is it? You know, especially now, you say Thursday Thursdays, when people go to Thursday Thursdays, that is the framing, west framing part of that park. Everyone who goes to Thursday's Thursday, see that building.
Yep.
That that sets the mood along with the 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 buildings on River Street. So it's it's an important building, I think, for the town, and even if you didn't know what was running there, it's a building you know is there, and you could notice it changing, for sure. But, yes, I get every, you know, for all of your other experiences, I totally agree, you know. It's it's a, it's a valid, it's a valid concern, but I think we're a little, you know, with where this one is.
Have you priced out, you probably have, but the the acrylic versus, I'm familiar with the product that you put a, almost like a galvanized piece of steel you screw to the front of the building, and then it's it's actually real stone, it's called half stone, that goes inside that 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 form, and then you you point the areas and I know I did a bunch on my house, and it, at the time, I didn't know there was acrylic, but at the time, it was one of the least expensive ways to go.
I think the last price check that I looked at, and I didn't look at half stones, four to five time multiplier.
Okay, because I I know that if you're familiar with, now it's, I call it the U-Haul Mall, but the, what they used to call the Horseshoe Mall in West Dundee, kinda behind the Walgreens, they put a similar product on that entire building. That entire building used to be a dark brown brick, and now it's a it's a lighter brick. Same, same system where a galvanized piece of steel screws on, and they actually screwed it up right on, they tapped on it right on to the old brick, and then put up this this new, it's thin, I mean, no more than about three quarters of an inch thick.
What's the weight on it?
It's not significant, it's not significant, and any, any standard frame structure can hold it. But.
Yeah, I I think, you know, I I would just say, as a long time resident here, I've seen several of our buildings get renovated in the last sixteen years. You see, there's one right across the street, and that was a cinder block building, and they put, you know, a brick over it, our our local brick, to make it look like our other buildings. The the medical supply building was also a cinder block building that they went. So they're changing it and making it better, but they're putting on brick and making it look like an old building. You know, the only one that I know that is synthetic is is Mockingbird, that they put a a poly, I think that's a not polyure, not polyurethane. Yeah, PVC.
Oh, okay.
So I think it's a PVC siding, but that was also a cinder block building. So I think it's a PVC siding, but that was also a cinder block building. Um, so I think doing like, you know, matching what the other people have done when they've renovated these buildings, you know, they could have all done also something else. But people have put in money into siding their buildings to look like our other buildings. So I mean, I, I, I respect them for doing that and, you know, it's something that has been consistent in this downtown area. So that's, you know, I think that's a, that's a, that's part of the pushback on, on, on me, you know, for me on, on the exterior when all of our other businesses that have done their renos have committed to kind of looking this way. And even, you know, the new building at the end of the street, right, they did that all in brick. Uh, the, the big, or, or DC Cobs and, uh, you know, they did that to match, you know. So everyone's trying to make it look like this.
Got it.
So it's, you know, I think we have a couple of different aesthetics, you know, that can make it, you know, stand out and, you know, definitely because you have four buildings really, you know, you can really break it up at least and have different, you know, not make it look like one big brown blob like it looks right now.
I, that, exactly. I was just going to add to that. You could always introduce a different color, you know, for your, your, um, let's say you go with something like a hardy plankboard. You know, you could do a different color, create your accents, still keep the same character because one of the things when you drive on these buildings, and this is the one at the corner, they have what they call like those, um, full facades. So once you, if you were to put stone on here, you'd just see like a little thin piece, you know, on the side, it'd look terrible. But I think if you keep that same character, the, the, the finishes, you know, if you were to keep something like that, change up the color, I think you would save money because it's a different material. Um, and I think it'll still look good and it'll fit in the.
And consistent.
Yeah. It's just, yeah.
Do you know any structures that have this product on it?
Yeah. I just saw a house the other day. A two-point-five million dollar house. It's beautiful.
Oh.
That's where I got the idea from the contractor, just because I was concerned that, I said, I want real stone and if I had to spend it, I'm going to go to the city and try to get real stone uh, to make it, but then I got the cost and he goes, come and see this house on your estate. And then I go see the house and I'm like, you can't even tell that it's, it's fake. Yeah, I, it's this, it's like it's real rock. Technology's, you know, obviously drastically changed.
Right.
Um, and then on top of that, the, um, the length and time and the maintenance and the cleanliness of it, I take a power washer to it and clean it. The building looks brand new every year or multiple times a year.
Are we confident, are you confident with this material? You know, I know in a residential, I think they primarily target, you know, a, a residential use. Um, and maybe as accents on commercial, this is a big, a big thing here. But with this material, like right up against the sidewalk like that, getting salt and getting kicked and stuff, would it abrade?
The material that I'll be using, yes, it'd be fine. And if it, it doesn't look fine, I'll replace it, just like I do at all my other buildings. And if it's something that didn't work, I'd replace the, the amount of maintenance that I, I have a maintenance guy on full time. I paint the building every day.
And you, and another thing you did say, I think earlier, which I didn't pick up from the initial drawing, I mean, because we're, we're only seeing the front. You said you'd wrap the whole building in it?
No, it's just that front.
Okay. Um, okay. So then it would be the brim of the clatter on the sides still?
Correct.
Okay.
So the exterior of the back wouldn't change, it's just the front to make it pop a little bit more. Yeah.
And do you, do you know what type of swirl or what type of finished, the finished surface, the, uh, the stucco would look like?
Try to make it as flat as possible.
Like a limestone finish? It, it, that's a smooth finish, really fine.
Yep.
Like that.
The color of it, I can't give you a color. If, if you guys told me I had to paint the building paint, I would change the color of that. So, but that's, that's the, the tricky part that I'm trying to get approval from you guys so that I can look at those other options and then come back with a, a finished three D rendering of it. And then hopefully one's flat and you guys are ready to go.
Now, I guess when you say smooth, so it's going to have more of an appearance like a drive it versus a stucco?
Actually, I, I'll take your feedback on what you guys are looking for.
Well, I, I would not be in favor of a drive it look. To me, if it had, it would need to have late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, uh, 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 appearance, which, uh.
What about the stucco? Have you ever seen maple hash stucco?
No.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't. You're talking a different language.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, are you looking like, I mean, I don't really know a lot of examples of the stucco around here?
Yeah, looks nice.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, uh, older stucco that's in, in historic late eighteen hundreds buildings in Chicago does, it typically doesn't look smooth. It, it almost looks like they, they did some kind of swirl. They kept, they just repeated a pattern over and over again of, of a swirl.
That's my setting. I have that in my setting.
And, uh,
Kind of popcorn ceiling.
And, and to me, a, a smooth finish would be somebody trying to imitate drive it versus, versus stucco. But, um, if, I, again, if there's, if there's something on a building, I mean, is it on your?
Yeah, I have a stucco on my door.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I can go by and look at that.
Yeah, I'll try.
So both of them, same thing?
No, uh, maple hash one's, uh, brick.
Okay, so which, which one has?
Dundee has a stucco.
Stucco, okay.
It looks nice.
Yeah.
I've been there.
Okay.
Can you send me a picture of that?
Yeah, I definitely can. It might be easier to see.
Yeah.
In person, but I'll send you a picture.
Right on the west end of the river.
Right.
So, um, I guess one, one last thing I would say, do we want to talk more about the stone? Um, or any stone options?
No.
It'd be nice just to see an example and then, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't, I'm not very fond of the stone.
Yeah.
It's just my personal opinion. Um, I like the character of the village. I love the brick that they have. Um, and I am, like I said, I, I work nationwide for restaurants. I do hospitality. I'm used to it all, but, but when it comes to historical districts, we do try to maintain that same flavor. So.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Okay, so then, um, on to the, oh.
Maybe a color bill?
Uh, a colored palette? Well, I think that yeah, should be submitted with the material, um, with what, you know, with ever, whatever you apply with in regards to the proposed facade. We would really like a, a color palette for still, as much as possible.
Okay, definitely.
Okay. Great, so then on to the next one, um, is signage. Um, that wasn't, I mean, it wasn't checked on the application, but we see it's, uh, provided here clearly. Um, so there's been, I guess, quite a few questions. Were you, um, asking about the, the, I, I got some questions, you know, from you, Franco. Was that from Frank or was that from someone else?
No, it was from Frank.
Yes, so I guess we can start with your questions in regards to the channel letter and whatnot.
Well, um, Chris reminded me of something. The signage is really not up to us anymore.
Mm-hmm.
But he would like, he would like us to give some guidance.
Well, I think the way that, that you can look at it, yeah, there's, there is a bunch of signage in the building ordinance. We can say it's historically accurate. Does that mean it can be built in our town? Maybe not, you know, so, um, one way or another, so we can't. You still have to follow our building codes regardless of what we, we say.
So the size of it currently is too big.
Correct.
So, um, I guess is it, is, are these essentially what they call channel letters?
That's, yes.
Okay, so there will be a, there would be a channel behind them and then the letters would mount on the channel?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and are, are the, are the letters themselves the, uh, uh, a aluminum or some type of a
Correct.
metal with a plastic or a vinyl or lexan surface over the top? Okay.
I, if you ask another question.
And then it essentially, it would either have neon or some type of LED lighting inside of it?
LED.
LED, okay.
And both, when both those would be a front lit sign.
Right, and then the, the lettering, the Mexican grill and, and Cantina, is that, are those just going to be unlit?
Block runners?
Right.
Okay.
You can make them where, um, at night the letters are white. It's a film that goes over it that perforated. That could be nice.
Have you, have you seen the, the signage on the front of the medical supply building? Tom built that building too.
Next to Calend, uh, Calendos?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, between Calendos and the little barber shop.
I have seen the sign, but I can't picture it right now.
Well, you'd have to go by there at night, but it, it's a, it's a individual letter and it's got, it's, it's almost got like light that casts itself on the building, but you can, you can make it out. And, uh, to me, that would be a, a type of rulid. I mean, it's not really rulid because it's not encapsulated inside, but it, it has backlighting, a backlighting characteristic to it. I just, I, I just personally feel that this might be a little bit too, too modern. Maybe if I saw it in a block letter, uh, uh, because the, the, the font, well, I understand why you want that font.
Right.
That's, that's certainly not, there was nothing historic that ever followed those types of, of, uh, changing in character sizes. So that, that, that would just be, if, if it was more like the Mexican grill type lettering, that would be more acceptable to me.
Actually, the, the lettering doesn't bother me, um, but the, the person does.
What's your issue?
Being Mexican?
Yep.
Um, it's very stereotypical. Can I, can I go in her heart and say that?
You can't.
Um, you know, the fact that, I don't know, is she like just wearing this little top? And doing, to me, um, looks like a gang sign with her hands crossed. That, that's me. Because I grew up in a different type of neighborhood. Um, but is there a reason or a history or for?
It's a red jalapeno.
It's red jalapeno.
Oh, okay. Oh, it's a red jalapeno?
Yep.
Yeah. Oh.
This is? Yeah.
Ah, that's what, okay.
Changes it up a little bit. Um,
Uh-huh.
Could I add a tail on there to make it more of a red jalapeno? Yeah, on the bottom of it. I definitely can do that. Um, have I talked about putting a full dress on? Yes. Um, but going back and forth.
I, I just say, yeah, okay. You've gone back and forth.
Yep.
Yeah.
I've looked at it and I, like I said, I have a lot of Hispanic employees, so I know that they've seen it.
Uh-huh.
And they've looked at it.
And we'll laugh at it and we think it's funny, but then you get the Mexican Americans that are just saying, hold on. You know, it's just.
No, but the first, when, I think when people realize that it's a jalapeno,
Yeah.
I think it changes the view on what it is.
Yeah.
I mean.
Have you seen the jalapeno?
I don't really.
But.
Oh, that's what, I would have never seen it.
If I took the sign out, it'd be a jalapeno.
That, that sounds funny, but I don't see it.
Yeah, and, and I mean, and really, you know, where, where this will be visible, right, there will be, you know, thousand, thousands of people a summer who will see it and not go into your restaurant. They'll just see that logo where it is, right? So they, well, they know that it's a jalapeno, almost certainly not. Right? If they go into your restaurant, they'll know, right?
I see, I see a pretty Mexican woman.
Yeah. And then, yeah, and we also don't have any logos like, anything like that in our downtown, like graphical logos. I think Anvil Club has the biggest existing one right now. Right?
With the Anvil?
With the Anvil.
DC Cobs doesn't have something over there.
It's on their awning.
It's on the awning, yeah.
Yeah. So the only one that I know. It's right, right where this one's going to be. There's now, when they went public, they have a sign that says the Anvil Club and it has.
That's it, yeah.
And it has an Anvil.
Yeah, I don't can, you barely notice it.
Yeah. So, yeah, I strongly prefer the, just the letters over the picture.
And I, I'm a big David Dead fan, um, in general, but I know a lot of people that don't like that, but I guess they can live with it. The little skulls on the side. I, I love that, but I think the lettering is probably safer.
Same cartoonish like type sign that we have on the X throwing business. Behind the, the Spartan.
I like the Spartan.
Yeah. I mean, it's kind of cartoonish and you've got the.
Yeah.
It, that's kind of what it reminds me of.
I think the fonts are really nice.
I think it just adds some character to the business. I mean, people can know at a glance that it's a Mexican restaurant. And it, I think it exudes kind of a party atmosphere and, you know, it, it grabs your attention.
Appreciate that.
So the, I guess what we're saying is coming out, I mean, and maybe we'll wait and have Chris confirm when he gets back.
But for the, that has to go back to, I would assume you guys are saying that you guys can approve or disapprove of?
Well, we can, we can definitely not approve it.
Got it. But that's something that I have to go to the city?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Well, we can say a sign's not historically appropriate. I'm sure we can.
No, I'll check with Chris. He, he, he told me it's up to him, Erica and Jeff.
Okay, we'll see.
About him.
So we, doesn't matter.
I thought we were going to be holding on it, but.
Yeah, I guess not.
He told me that all the signage has been taken away from all of the planning and zoning and everything and wrestled with himself, Eric, the village manager and the village president.
Oh, okay, then why are we talking about it?
Yeah, okay. But if that's the case, Franco, you should, we'll, we'll make sure you get the right information on that.
Okay.
Because, you know, I know this has been shared with the, um, with all of the trustees already, uh, so it's been, been seen, um, by, by that group. You know, and then obviously it's public record now, you know, we're having a meeting today, so.
I believe you and Erica already spoke about the signage, right?
Yeah.
Will you have other options?
Yeah, I have other options.
Okay. So you could just include that and when you propose the other stuff that we talked about tonight, just talk about the other options that you and Erica discussed.
Perfect.
Okay, so there's, other than these two, there's additional options?
Yeah, I have multiple.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, and I believe is that the, oh, and then opening outdoor seating. It's lost. Is there anything else anyone would like to speak in regards to the uh, signage?
Nope.
That we, that doesn't matter anyway?
No.
Okay. So then the last one is opening outdoor seating and, um, any questions on this one?
No.
Well, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
It's a beautiful veranda. I think the only question I have is, um, if you'll be doing behind the, like a, a, a solid wall on the opposite side.
It'll be a solid wall.
Yeah, so you don't see the employee parking lot.
Right.
Correct, okay, great.
Perfect.
I love this idea. I'm so happy you're opening this up.
Yeah, it's such a great space.
Introducing, yeah. I think we need something like this.
Yeah.
And is that going to be like a, a, a split rail fence that you see in the southwest?
Well, I've gotten some feedback on both sides of it, but I've gotten feedback that we want it similar to the, um, call it, uh, DC Cobs and, um, to
Black.
Alianos.
Illinois.
Yeah, in the way that it's like a brick.
Okay.
Stone, um, finish. Like I said, I, I have no problem going either way, like I love the, the planer boxes that I have maple, at Maple Ash at both locations, you know, fresh in there and, yes.
I would, I think, um, having that as, instead of rain, it's having a planter bed or something always softens it up. And it's, it looks nice, so.
So and then this winter, I mean, you, you did talk about earlier about potentially having a B F Four Seasons, uh, space if, uh, the restaurant did well. Um, before it is that, which would be like this winter, for example, would it just, you'd just like close it down?[1739.01] Before it is that, which would be like this winter, for example, would it just, you just like close it down?
Yep, but it'd be finished before that.
Yeah, 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 but you'd just like get all the furniture out of there or whatever, winterize it, and it would be shut for them, okay.
Maybe you, fun at that set during the snow time.
Yeah.
Hot chocolate.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, you know, we do that, um, uh, Dickens and Dundee thing here, you know, it'd be a great addition to that perhaps, so. Maybe do hot chocolate right now in a tent out on the, but move it over there, it's all crowded in the park.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Just wanna make a comment, sorry, Lily.
Go ahead.
Just wanna make a comment of what you guys talked about earlier, um, looks like in January of twenty twenty-two, before I started here, there was an amendment to, um, the historic district ordinance, and it just reads the village president, village administrator, and the building inspector shall evaluate the effects of any applications for a sign permit within the district, uh, pursuant to the appropriate provisions of chapter one five six signs. Considering the purpose of this chapter, um, it basically says, in which, in their discretion may recommend changes in the design, size, or other features of the sign to assure its compatibility with the visual and texturing historic or architectural character of the district, so that's why Erica reached out to you and talked to you about it.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I have, add another question?
Sure.
Um, in terms of lighting, are, are you thinking of doing any type of exterior lighting to the building?
Uh, just probably, uh, like black stones.
Okay.
Simple.
In that veranda, would you, uh, two lights hanging or anything like that, or?
String lighting, nice string lighting.
Yeah, so the trellis already exists.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, does that have any, and I think it has speakers.
It'll be modified.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's solid, I mean, it's, I think Tom must, that must have been only put in like ten years ago. Yeah, so, I think everyone was very excited about that. Yeah, I mean, the first time I went in there, um, I'm like, this is the best place to eat outdoors in Dundee.
Yeah.
You know, it was beautiful, it's before Alianos had their outdoor area, but you know, there was just nothing compared to it, I mean, it wasn't even close. So the fact that, that, that will be shared with more people in town, and you'll be able to see the park and the events, I think it's, you know. I think the walls were only put up because it was a private park.
Yep.
Yes.
Uh, the house that you said had this material on it, where's it at?
I can get you the address.
If you could get it to Franco so he can get it to us?
Yep.
Yeah.
I can't. And at worst, I can get pictures of it.
Yeah, if, if, I don't, if they eat it or anything, they probably don't want us strangers walking up.
I can get it all, it's the same GC that I used for all my projects, so, great guy.
Maybe you could bring in a sample at the next meeting?
Yeah, I think this, the problem with it is the sample doesn't do justice to what it looks like, right? Cause like, for example, you can go to Hameville and say, this looks horrible, but then you put it up, and it's just like I've done it, you know, some of the, the other projects that I've had, I told the my GC, I'm like, this looks horrible. And then they put it up and I'm like, alright, I second guessed that, it actually looks really good. But yeah, I can definitely, I can get a sample of it, for sure, as well.
I think that'll be helpful.
Yeah, and then the edging, I know, you have to cut it on the edge, what's the edge gonna be if you did use that? Like when it hits the edge of the building?
I think for something like that.
There's, there's probably actual, actual separate pieces that are, are, are open on one side and then it's rounded on the other.
It'll be like a stone going down.
I'm gonna make, and it's gonna look good.
Okay.
I have to make it look good.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it will be that, it would be that, you know, noticeable transition that we would have, you know, it'll be people looking at this from all different angles all the time, right?
Yeah, and for example, if I had to use a thicker wood, um,
To capture the cut?
Yeah, to add onto it, to blend it, I would for a hundred percent do that. Now, I'll be honest with you, when we start to do this, is there, would there be minor changes to make it look better? Of course, and then I'll present that, but if there's something that isn't gonna look up to the standard that I would like or I know that the community would like, I'm gonna make those adjustments and bring it to the, the proper steps of people that needs to be done. But nothing's gonna look unfinished, there's no way.
Yeah.
It's the details that everyone looks at, and especially because it's the facade.
Right.
Right, if it looks bad, what is it gonna look like inside?
So when you, sorry. Go ahead, when you touch it, how does it feel? I haven't encountered or used this product that you're talking about.
It feels like real brick.
So it has that texture?
Correct.
Yeah.
And the, the way that it looks like.
Do they have to finish it with like mortar in between, or is it already pre, the whole assembly?
I can't give you that exact answer, I don't wanna lie about it, but it's.
If you could tell the GC to give you the product spec, it would be interesting seeing it, I'm still, don't like it because of the character of the facade, being the full facade to begin with. Um, so maybe have your architect also look at, um, hardy plank or pre-engineered type of wood cladding system.
Yeah.
Of some sort.
That, you know, it's the color that you want, which I definitely see wanting to lighten it up.
Yeah.
You know, I think it was, if you look at these old photos, it looks like it was pretty light originally, it just, we, you know, we, anyone still alive saw it, it was dark from age, um, but you know, having it, you know, I think that would make it you know, stand out a lot more than it presently does, um.
I did a half, um, brick wall on a restaurant, and it was cut in half, and I thought it was gonna look horrible. My bottom just had brick to it, and then they put it in, it looks like real brick.
Right.
And people go up to the wall and I'm like, if you actually look up about four more feet, there's no brick wall.
Right.
No, I do those other types.
Yeah, it's just, it, technology's just, it moves so drastic. Which location?
Conview.
Yeah.
Okay. Mark Jacobs?
I mean, that could be a thirty year old.
Yes, I know. It's a good guy.
Cool, so, uh, I think we've gone through every, every item on the list, so, um, thank you very much.
I'll provide feedback to Frank, uh, Franco as quickly as I can on all the questions you guys have. And then, uh, I'll have a drawing as quick as I possibly can.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kyle, the next meeting is August fourteenth.
Perfect. Cool, well, thank you so much for coming and answering all our questions, um, you know, it's clear to see your passion in this project. So, I appreciate the energy and, you know, looking at East Dundee as, uh, you know, a potential home for your, your business, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Great, um, okay, now I believe we have no other business, uh, so I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Um, I, I do have one question while we have a couple of trustees here on the village president. I guess I'm just wondering whether it's appropriate that the historic commission certificate of appropriate has to be issued by us, cause we're, we seem to be very geared into the land use and we're not supposed to consider the monetary aspect of it. However, in this aspect, we're, I don't know that we're the final, I mean, if somebody wants to appeal us, they can go to the village board. But I, I just wonder if it's more in the village board's privy to consider both land and, uh, uh, monetary value. So, and it, and I, I don't know if we need an answer, I mean, we're not gonna get an answer tonight, but I just throw that out there for the board to potentially consider, and or if anyone on this commission has any strong feelings one way or another.
So, so I would say that the way that historic commission is set up, uh, they can always appeal all the way to the board. We can be overridden, if we, if we say no, then we can be overridden by the board and so, so I think there is already that, that angle, I kinda like the independent nature of it. And in here, we're saying historic susacca commission, we, we, we value specifically this area and we wanna look at it in a preservation way, I think we look at more buildings in particular and talk about that. Um, so, I think, I, I personally like the fact that it's separated, that we can do it, there is a recourse. And then when we say yes, to me, that means like we're saying that this, with this, it makes your business just like any other business in town. So now we can, it's done with, with us, and we're just that, that with us. I mean, if we can definitely, you know, you can talk more, or you can respond?
Okay, no, I, 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 I just, I just throw it out there, cause that would leave us, that would leave us looking at, at land use only, and how, how, how whatever application is before us would affect the neighboring landowners and all the landowners of the village. And then we don't consider any monetary, uh, or should be considered, any monetary gains or losses to the village, so.
Frank, well, I don't believe we are in this case, I mean, it's, it is a one item, one thing in there says that, which I don't particularly like.
Yeah, yeah, um, I, I mean, I believe Colin has said that he's, he's gotta make this property pop otherwise it, it may not, uh, it may not make it.
Right.
So it's, I guess, if we said no and he goes to the village board, the village board wants okay, that, that's fine, I, I have no issue with that. But if we say no to something and, and it doesn't make a change enough, like, um, I will grant that there hasn't been anything else at, at the Anvil Club building ever, well, I mean, other than a blacksmith shop back in the late eighteen hundreds.
Yeah.
So it doesn't have the characteristics, but like the building he's in in West Dundee has probably had fifteen businesses in the last ten years.
Right, right.
So you, you do have to make enough of a, of an impact change in order to, to try and win the, uh, uh, the culture, the people, or, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, and I recognize that as business owner for sure, is being a, you know, is there, I think, you know, obviously we see with business owners and special uses and every, and variances, you know, they, they want every advantage that they can have, you know. I think our commission's been put in place to particularly protect this area.
Yeah.
You know, um, and it's just, it's another, it's another way to, to, you know, express what we think are the interests of the, the townspeople of East Dundee, where they've expressed that they love our historic downtown and the people who come and visit. You know, so, yeah, it's, you know, it's a fun discussion, but, you know, I'm glad we have it on record.
Yep.
I, I hope people listen to these and they, you know, get some idea of what we're saying and thinking. So, thank you, great, so I will entertain, uh, a motion to, uh.
My motion.
Okay, we have a motion?
A second.
And a second?
All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Hearing none.
Bye.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, you wanna chat, you wanna?
No, no.
And you wanted to do?